I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 council meeting to order. Can I have a movement of silence and pledges of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can I have roll call to this?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Rashad Bates? Dustin Queenan?
Here.
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
Lauren Hughes?
Here.
Thomas LaPera?
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
No move.
Second.
Mr. President, just one correction on the minutes, if you will, on page five, under the item Resolution 23-77, first paragraph, the name Alicia Taylor should be Alicia Turner. And that, with that correction.
Alicia Fields?
Huh?
Fields?
Fields. What? Why do I got Turner on here? Alicia Fields.
Correction noted.
Alicia Fields.
Correction noted. Motion still approved?
No move. Second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. Announcements, Madam Vice President.
This Saturday at the Norristown Rec Center is the Winter Festival. Kevin's not here and I don't know the times.
One to seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one to seven, something like that. So feel free to come out if you enjoyed it last year. It's gonna be at the Rec Center. So there's vendors inside and skating rink?
The skating rink is not this year, but there's holiday stores, there's Kids Zone that's sponsored by Mascararo.
Carnival ride.
Carnival, yes.
Yes, so this Saturday at the Norristown Rec Center is the Winter Festival. Any other announcements?
Did you have executive session?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other announcements?
The George Washington Harvard Community Center is having their holiday party on Sunday, December the 10th, from 12 to 3:00. Santa Storytime with Mrs. Claus, activities, toy giveaways, and refreshments. And that's from 12 to 3:00 to come in Sunday, December the 10th, Harvard Community Center.
And the chamber has a mixer on Thursday.
On Thursday, at Elmwood Park Zoo.
Thank you very much. Moving to public comments, Madam Secretary.
Yes. Jane, the call?
Right here, right here.
Right here, okay.
In between the two microphones.
In between, all right. Okay, good evening. So I was wanting to get a letter that is actually to you guys, but is delivered via me. Wanted to get it on record. And I'll tell you at the end who it's from, but anyway, it's not from me, otherwise it'd be a lot longer. Here we go. Dear Council, growing up in the East End, West End, and North End, I felt comfortable riding my bicycle anywhere in Norristown. Rival kids from all backgrounds and schools became summer teammates on the Elmwood Park basketball court. For Saturday entertainment, I had four movie theaters to choose from: The Grand, The Garrick, The Norris, and The Westmar. The brewery and the state hospital were populated by thousands. Norristown was known as the largest independent borough in the world. It's become common for old timers to mourn the current state of their hometown. Fortunately, there are still people on hand with goodwill and intentions. To those long-range dreamers, I would suggest the focus be not on recapturing the town that was, but on the town that can be, a new Norristown that meets the needs of all its people, that responds to the conditions and imperatives of today. The riverfront, the courthouse, the park, the zoo, these assets have long defined the structure of the community. But it must never be forgotten that the primary resource, the defining feature of Norristown has been and always will be its people. To engage and inspire them in the service of the community in which they live is the noblest task of local government. And that's from Jerry Spinelli, Norristown High School, 1959.
Mike Hayes?
Mike Hayes, break report. Just a couple of quick things. As of about a week or two ago, the Planning Commission minutes agenda, even a list of the Planning Commission members, was not available on the website. I tried for like 15 minutes to try to find it, just a heads up there. Point number two, this past weekend, Pennsylvania Society, big event in New York City, right? A lot of aspiring politicians, former governors, members of Congress flock to New York. The reason I bring this up is because oftentimes people wonder, you know, what's being discussed behind closed doors? Where's the money in politics? What are they discussing? Well, kind of the counterbalance to that is campaign finance, right? Campaign finance statements, the reporting standards are pretty rigorous, both for the local level and at the federal level. And I bring this up because Mr. LaPera, who was recently re-elected, congratulations on that, I did confirm with the county that you have zero campaign finance statements on record for 2023. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, since it is something that would need to be addressed before January. Thank you.
Jim Waters?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're having a nice Thanksgiving. I wore my Never Give Up shirt today because I started on something a while ago that had to do with the flooding of Sturgis Street Bridge. And in fact, I brought a little article as a handout, and it was in the living section of the Times Herald, Sunday, July 11th, 2010. And it got me pointing to the bridge and how it was undermining, and down here about degrading and all that stuff that was done. So I was really excited to drive across there in my Barracuda. And I'd like to thank the Times Herald, I think you got a really good picture of it. All right, look, we're done with that. That bridge is taken care of. We still worrying that because it was flooding and shutting down, the people from the west couldn't get to the hospital. So now we actually don't have to worry about that because two years after I complained, they opened Einstein, so I didn't have that argument. But the argument I have right now is the water company. Once again, the water company wants to raise the rates, and I've had arguments about that forever. I like to fill out those complaint forms. The bottom line is, is that I will be filing formal complaint with respect to them not doing anything to remove the pollution because they say they have no jurisdiction. They, we just had to pay to clean up the pollution that no one seems to be able to do anything about. I talk about the muddy water, the erosion, the pollution in the Schuylkill River, and what I'm using is my intro is this article from the Inquirer, "Foul State of Pennsylvania's Water Waves." Report finds PA regions among the worst polluted. So if the waters are polluted and no one has any jurisdiction to stop the pollution because this is the 50th year that they, the State Department of Environmental Protection file reports with the federal government. So we have pollution here from the Stony Creek, right, that can be seen from the satellite, and that's gonna be part of my presentation. I think I may have sent that to some of you already, I'm not really sure. Four issues that I have with this borough, West Norton, the school district, and the county. It's kind of hard keeping track of who I'm talking to about what. And I, you know, I could never do your job. You know, I could never do your job. But look, if the time's up, or I can keep going if you want. Basically, here's for you guys, and of course, the consumer advocates have me on speed dial. You get the paperwork explains how to fill a formal complaint and all the things you can do if you're angry with the water company. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Municipal Development, Ms. McSany, Main Street Economic Development Initiative, 14 West Main Street.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, if you recall at the last council meeting, where I had asked you to reject the bids that were received for 14 West Main Street, actually a bid that was way higher than what we could afford. And I did promise council that we were going back to the regulations and we're going to look and see what we could do to make this work. And we did find a way to make it work, actually quite excited about that. So we looked at the regulations, and the regulations allow us to give a business in an area such as where this business located, which has 20% property rate, we allowed to acquire a building on behalf of a private business to be able to do business. And what we would do is then have a judgment on the building to protect our interests, of course, in case the business does not work. So we looked at the situation, if you recall, council had awarded about a year ago $100,000 towards this project. Of course, as I mentioned, when we went out to the bid, it was way over, it was close to actually $599,000, $499,000. And that is mostly because labor and material went up. But recall, if we're bidding the projects, we have to go through the Davis Bacon wage rates and things of that nature, that increases the cost. However, if we're able to actually put the funds towards the mortgage, they can actually borrow against that property, and they can actually do the work without going through those federal regulations, which would be much, much cheaper. So that's another way we found of doing that, and it's eligible and we can do it. So we're asking council to award, to increase the amount from 100 to 160,000, knowing that that year, all those costs went up, so that they'll be able to actually get this project going. The good news is that they didn't forward up and go, they were still doing their little business just to stay afloat. So they're still in town, they're still at the same building, and they'll be able now to do the improvements they need to do, equipment, plumbing, and things like that, without additional costs. So we're asking you to now to add, to do two things, increase the, up to 160, and to approve that increase so that we can get into a new agreement with the business and we can move forward with this project and we're gonna have our restaurant open.
Council, any questions?
If it is now the business doing all the contracts for the work, what guarantee do we have that we give them this money, that that work actually happens in a similar value amount?
Excellent question, and that's why we have the judgment. The agreement that we have is basically saying, we're gonna put this money towards your mortgage, and the return is that you complete this work for a restaurant. Failure to do so, we have a judgment on your property, meaning we can recover that money from that property. So we're kind of leaning it, for lack of a better word. The good news too is that they're already in there, so it's not that they're going, it hasn't been working in the sense, it's just not there. It's not at the level it's supposed to be. So by you agreeing to do this, we will lean the property or put a judgment on it. They can go ahead and borrow, they're here tonight, in fact, they can answer that question. They're willing to enter into agreement with us, which will bind them to do what it is that we're asking them to do, and that is have their restaurant upgraded so they can continue with their business.
Thank you. I would love to hear from the business owners, just to give them an opportunity to plug their business and hear about what it is that's happening, especially since you're already working in this place. Come up here and get on camera.
A little bit of the storage, not cooking in there.
Right, right, right. So we wanna see, hear what's now and what's to come, and so that we can be excited about it there.
Hi, so foremost, thank you guys for this opportunity to come in front of you guys. And I also want to thank Jane and team for helping us during this long, two-year process. We started this process over two years ago. To give you a little bit of background, prior to starting this process, I acquired the building. My family was born and raised in Norristown. My father was a sheriff on the Sheriff Department. My grandfather also serves as the first black council member in Conshohocken, so we are deeply rooted in the community. Prior to getting the grant, I acquired 14 West Main Street, and I personally put in over 200K into renovations as well as coming up with the business plan. To give you background of myself, I have a master's in business. I am a compliance officer and auditor. My mother here, she's had over 20 years of experience in the food, cooking, catering world. And I apologize, I wasn't expecting to get up here and speak, so bear with me. So I can assure you, our personal goal is not just to create a property and a business in Norristown, but it's also to expand throughout Montgomery County. Norristown was our first stopping point because of our deep roots here, and we felt in seeing the needs here. I'm looking to stay here a long time and expand our business plan. I do have business experience, I own residential and commercial buildings as well. From a compliance perspective, I understand rules, regulations, I understand legal contracts. I put together a business plan and also had worked with contractors to develop the costs associated with building up our current business. Right now, as Jane had mentioned, we are still operating, but we're on a much smaller scale because we do not have the capability nor the facility to take our business to the next level. So that's just a little bit about me, just to give you background and to assure you that we're looking for the long run, we're looking to expand in Norristown, and just, it's just our first flagship building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Council, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the Economic Development Initiative and a grant award of $160,000?
No move.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, you guys have it. Motion passes.
You're welcome.
Chief O'Donnell, Resolution 23-84.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is possible. Counsel before you, this evening is a Resolution 23-84. Earlier this year, we were awarded a federal safer grant, I'm sorry, assistance to firefighter grant to purchase a washer and extractor and drying system for, to launder our firefighters' turnout here. So this request is, would be funds used to purchase that equipment. In total, the purchase is for $25,575, and it's for Whitver Public Safety Group. And again, with the grant, we received a total of $22,272.72, and we have a 10% match that we're required to participate in, so that would be absorbed into our existing budget. So in total, the grant's for $25,575, and it would be mostly grant cover.
Thank you. Chief, counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the purchase of a washer, extractor, drying system?
No move.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, you guys have it. Motion passes. Finance, Ms. Fister, Resolution 23-79.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'd like to request council to adopt Resolution Number 23-79 for the 2024 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan request. On the 2024-28 CIP budget was initially presented to council at the last meeting on November 21st. The total budget is $13,064,612 plus liquid fuels for $1,061,587. In your packet, you have the details of all the projects and the entire five-year plan.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-79?
No move. Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the ayes have it. Resolution passes. Ms. Fister, Resolution 23-77.
Okay, Resolution 23-77 is the proposed 2024 consolidated fee schedule. The council annually amends this schedule as necessary for economic reasons. At the last meeting on November 21st, staff presented changes to the consolidated fee schedule. In addition, I have one addition to the schedule is for the electric vehicle chargers. There, it's gonna be an eight cents per kilowatt hour charge that was added to the schedule that we gave to you on November 21st. And that's the only change since that time.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I do have a question, and it probably is a question for A, B, and C. Any community feedback, any response since the announcement and the council meeting and the publication of these budgets and prospective?
On the budget item, I was gonna mention, we had three public meetings, November 9th, November 15th, and November 20th. Two of them were in the evening at 6:00 PM, and one was at noon. We had no attendance. In addition, Kevin pushed it out on social media, we had it advertised on local paper on November 6th, and no comments.
And just for council's information, we're legally required to have two public meetings, but we always do three, so that we make sure we give folks an additional opportunity to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Resolution 23-77? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-77?
No move. Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the ayes have it. President, motion passes. Ms. Fister, ordinance Number 23-08.
Ordinance Number 23-78 is to adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget and establishing the real estate tax rate for 2024. This will increase the mileage rate from 17.0 to 17.25. Council, we went through the whole process, council heard departmental proposals from each department head. We had three public meetings, as mentioned, it was advertised and available on the public website. Council approved the advertisement of the real estate tax increase, November 24th was when it was advertised. The proposed general fund budget for 2024 is $43,669,539 in expenditures and revenue. The proposed liquid fuels budget is $1,860,785. The capital improvement plan budget is $13,064,612. As I mentioned, the rate will increase from 17 to 17.25. And that is what we're recommending.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 23-08?
No move.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the ayes have it. Ordinance passes. Departmental reports, we'll start with planning, Ms. McSany.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have a hot copy of the Economic Development Report, and now have to do this magic over here. Wait a minute, did I get anyone?
Safer I am, Linda.
That's right. Not that bad. Good evening, Council, and members of the public. As I had promised, I would provide an update on, I provide an update on the Economic Development projects, so that you'd have an idea where we are. I will not, all right, as you can see, we have a long list of our projects. There's some you're familiar with, and there's some we'll go a little deeper. There've been changes in some of the projects, and some projects that not much has changed, but it's for your benefit now to know where we are with these projects. The first and foremost, of course, is the Norristown State Hospital. As you're aware, a request for proposal was out, five proposals was submitted, and there've been one gone to two, and council should be making a final decision for master developer, hopefully by the end of this year. And when we come back at the next update, we'll be able to give you more information on that. Recall it's 68 acres of land that is to be developed in mixed use. The next project that we have is the Grand at Main and DeKalb. If you will recall, the developers came in front of you for conditional use, that's the zoning part of it, actually to allow for this mixed-use building to be developed. If you recall, it has about 124 market rate units and a ground floor of common space, and it's right at the corner of Main and DeKalb, next to the Justice Center that's being built. The developer has just submitted land development plans, so you will be seeing them either on the 19th, or you'll see them in January, back to now basically doing the physical end development part of this development. The next project is the Montgomery Park Senior Housing. I have received several inquiries from the public, asking me, what happened to the empty space that is remaining at the former hospital? As you know, two of the phases were built in a total amount of 92 units. And of course, the final parcel was to have another 42 units, and that's the Phase 3. The developer has been trying to get financing from the state, it has been slightly delayed, but he's still in pursuit of that financing, and he's anticipating that he'll be able to start the development in 2025. He uses tax credits, and it's quite a complex mixture of financing, and that's why it's taking a little bit of time to get there. But he isn't withdrawing his house, some people in the community were concerned that it was not moving any further, and that it's a blind area now. It is not. The developer is still on track.
I've actually heard that some of those tax credits are...
They're being held up?
Well, they're...
They've been released?
They're gonna be released.
Beautiful, that's good for us, so...
I learned that at P.A.'s society.
Yes, yes, excellent. Next project that we have is our housing rehabilitation program. I made mention of it when I was presenting the CDPG project last time at council. Recall, we've been doing this project since 1986. We've done over 490 homes, and right now, we have two homes that are currently under construction, three completed, three homes that are underway, and three others in the pipeline. The cost of doing rehab really shot up, just given that you have to do the lead abatement and all that, where it used to be something to the effect of doing a rehab for about $30,000. In today's dollars, it's anywhere from 40,000 to 60,000. So we're not doing as many homes as we used to, but it's the correct thing to do, to bring these properties into compliance. But it's working, and we have also applied for additional funds in the home program from the state, which is $500,000. And knock on wood, that is good science, we may be getting that, so we can help more homeowners. The next project that we have is the First Time Home Buyer Financial Assistant Program. We've been marketing this program. We haven't had many bites, given the interest rates, I guess, the housing market has slowed down a little. But I'm here to tell you though, once the other place, construction comes in, I know the developer Sarah Peck is very good at coddling these type of incentives and helping people buy homes, especially first-time buyers. So I won't be surprised next year when we come for zero budget on this one. I know she will be able to take advantage of that. The next project that we have is the Bear Building at 118120 East Main Street, if you recall. It's a mixed-use, and that's the one that has the axe throwing, whatever it is that they're going to be doing. They have been approved for a liquor license, and as you can see in the pictures down there, I'm told it's a very beautiful place. I think some of the council members have been there, I haven't been there yet, but I'm told by the building department that they just went through the code, and they should be good, they should be opening soon. They will be coming back to council because they'll be looking for ceiling on the outside as well, just to, but I'm glad it's gotten to this point. It had stalled for a little bit, but at least now we are at this point where we can see it's about to open.
That sidewalk out front there looks really nice, too.
Thank you. The main street, I forgot to say, I have to take kudos for that, too.
Yeah, you do.
So the streetscape seems to have come just on time, so at least now it'll attract the other businesses into also investing in their own business, seeing all this type of... of improvements that are going around them.
It's nice environment, too.
And it's white, so they'll be absolutely out there. I just had to add Vancy for those who have not seen it. If you haven't been there, you're missing out. It's a beautiful space. I just want to be able to showcase and let people know this is in Norristown. I've heard a few people say it is in Norristown. Just want to make sure that it's taken across. The next project is the two fifty-seven East Main Street, the mixed use redevelopment. We spoke to the developer and he told us that he anticipates starting construction in the spring of 2024. If you recall, it was twenty-two units with commercial space on the ground floor and these are developers who came in from Philadelphia. And it's a small building, so we don't anticipate that it's going to take that long and that quite a bit of it will be prefaced anyway. So the next project is the Elmwood Park Zoo. For any of you who have driven by there, you'll see the pictures and you can see it's quite an undertaking. These pictures don't do it justice, but if you are right above where the ball fields are and you look down and you'll see how massive and expensive this development is, the impact it's having is tremendous. And given that it's going to have the only, I think, animal hospital, it'll be even more of an attraction. Knowing that it's receiving over eight hundred thousand visitors, it's a serious rival to the Philadelphia Zoo. So we are very pleased with that.
I have a question. So finish it.
Not a problem. If you were going to talk about the ball fields and extra.
Nope.
Okay, good. I was hoping I was dropping that.
No, no, no. If you want to keep going, but I do have a question about the hospital.
Not a problem. So we are expecting, of course, to be refunded once the zoo expenses, parking in the ball fields that they had probably said they wanted, they needed. And they do believe that the expansion of this is going to be rapid. So we're anticipating the refund of those grant funds that were put in there so that we can continue with some other projects, I think on the riverfront and also at Elmwood Park with the master plan.
So my question about hospitals, are hospitals nonprofit? Like, do they not pay taxes? So just as with the hospital portion of it, like, what's their tax liability? I don't know if anybody.
Hospitals are usually non-profit.
They're usually non-taxable.
But even a veterinary hospital?
Question. I don't know.
That I don't, I don't have an experience with a veterinary hospital. The question is going to be how they incorporated and then any kind of appeal Norristown would have it would be in a Montgomery County Board of Assessment and they would make that.
Right.
Call, but I don't know if it taught my head. I haven't dealt with a veterinary hospital question.
It's a unique situation. Be curious of the tax.
I'm curious, too. I can never thought about that.
I know in some of the, in some of the early discussion that they were having about it a couple of years ago, they wanted to kind of incorporate a teaching portion, aspect in it, which would kind of help protect.
Right, yeah, their tax.
Protect that, don't it?
Veterinary hospital, right? So they're nonprofit.
Nonprofit, yeah. Don't forget, even though we lost the Montgomery Hospital, now we have a development that's giving us taxes. Okay. Royal Farms is the next project. Last time it looked at it, I think we'd mentioned the car wash. The car wash is finally in. It's picking up. It was a little slow, but it's picking up. And we're hoping that the businesses around this area, and if you've noticed, there is another business not far from the former, the Venida. They have been bought and they're putting in a new business in there. I believe it's a restaurant. So it seems to have a positive impact on the surrounding area. Next project that we have is the Benjamin Court, also known as two hundred East Logan or Honey Lane. It's being marketed heavily. Nine of the, sorry, eight of the units have been sold and the continuation of construction is right on point. They're selling for anywhere, I think, from three ninety-five or four hundred and above. This, as you recall, is right next to Kennedy Kendrick. Fourteen, seventeen and fourteen, nineteen, New Hope Street, that's on Old. Fourteen, twenty-one, Green Valley. We were just informed by the developer today that they're proposing some changes on this development, even though they received their preliminary and final land development. So you will probably be seeing them in about two months with some changes to this particular project. The next is fifteen and seventeen East Finance Street. I believe they've completed, they're marketing it. They're selling it for, I think, over three ninety-five. This same developer was looking to develop twenty-six, thirty-six West Wood Street and he's waiting to complete the sale of the fifteen and seventeen Finance Street before he moves on this one. Fourteen, thirty-seven, DeKalb Street, as you know, this was an expansion that was done and investment of over five hundred thousand of the thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty square foot of medical offices. Now, back to your question, councilwoman, I don't know if this one is locked or not. I'll have to look into that.
Okay.
I suspect we looked into it at some point because we say it's twenty-two thousand in Texas, but I will verify that. The next project is eight twenty Thomas Street. The land development agreements are in progress. You approved this one. It's also being marketed. I see it on Facebook and I've seen it on other social media. They haven't started construction, but clearly they are still scheduled to build this development. So it's not gone away. The next one is Sandy Hill. Sandy Hill was looking for financing. This was for twenty-nine studio apartments, thirty-eight one bedrooms, nine two bedrooms apartment unit. Since they were trying to get the finance together, the zoning had run out. They went back to zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board then gave them a one-year extension. Next project is Stinson Hall, sixteen fifty-one Markley Street. Those are the condominiums. The developer is eager to complete this, even though he's in between agreements for the land development. He did tell me personally that he does have a waiting list. So he's anxious to start development. Soon as those agreements come into place, he's ready to go. He'll probably be starting this in the summer of 2024. Next is Current Terrace. That's ten eleven New Hope Street. If you recall, they're going to be adding a thirty-six unit multifamily apartment. They did call me. They were a little concerned that the zoning had expired and I was pleased to tell them it hadn't expired. So they are still on track. They're also hoping to start breaking ground towards the end of next year. Montgomery County Justice Center. We just took the information they gave us from their website, which is pretty non-medical, very general. But as you know, as you can all see, the construction is continuing. And these are just some of the illustrations of the construction that is continuing. I want to talk a little bit about the developer of Arbor Place. Just for the council members who are not familiar, this developer, Progressive Homes, had done several developments, first one being Arbor Heights, second Arbor Muse. Then there was Arbor No. Each development, she kept on expanding the number of units she was delivering. And now she is the same developer who is now working on Kennedy Kendrick. And in this one, just got some confirmation from her today on what is expected to be delivered. And there's the picture of some renderings. We just got a little further. And this is what's going on. The demolition of the convent has been completed, as most of you might know. Got an email there. The first phase, which will consist of the ninety for sale homes, will start, the construction will start in early March. So they're going to be delivered this year. Councilwoman, I know you asked me about that the last time, so I got confirmation about that. And the next part, the next phase, which will consist of demolishing the school itself, the developer, the part of developer is looking for financing, but actually is in the process of putting together the demolition financing. And the developer says that he should be demolishing it within two and a half months. So don't be alarmed when you see the demolition equipment there. I know you have several things going on. You have, of course, the construction in the back. You have the construction of the intersection and now you have the construction of Kennedy Kendrick going on. So that's going to be pretty busy. Next, we have the Lafayette Street project. As far as I know, the extension, the connection to the turnpike is still on. We're told it was funded. We're just waiting.
They said about expanding bridge pike so that they can handle the flow of traffic coming off of that. So that bridge pike expansion is underway now, as you can see when you drop down.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. So that's underway. The good thing is that the connection has been funded. Then, of course, as we all know, Markley Street's reconstruction phase two was completed. And we move on to six hundred East Finance Street townhome. We spoke to the developer yesterday and he did say that even though he received his preliminary and final land development, the economic situation right now in terms of the interest rates, he's holding off for a little bit, but he's not pulling out. He's just waiting for the interest rates to stabilize, but he's still intent on moving forward. And if you recall, those were twenty-five new townhomes that he's going to build. The Art Street Greenway project is one was completed. Phase two, we have some funding. It's not sufficient, but we have applied for funding from Tessa, which is almost a million dollars. And we're waiting to be told whether we succeeded with that application by the end of December. So I definitely let council know. They seem to really like our project. Hopefully it did win that grant. If you recall the last conversation we had about the blight remediation project, we're just giving you three examples of some of the blight properties that we're looking to remediate and actually build stormwater components. So to the left, you have what it looks like and to the right, the engineering plans on how the flooding will be recaptured, or rather, the stormwater will be recaptured once those buildings have been torn down. They're all vacant and they're all legally blighted, blighted. Next project is the Trail Junction Center, which is being headed by the county. Those are renderings of what they're looking to do. They went out on a request for information. They will be coming back to you, council, to let you know the type of interest they have received, the type of ideas that are being proposed for that site. We have informed the county that as much as its accounting part is still subject to the local zoning, so whatever uses that are going to be proposed there have to meet the zoning requirements or receive various or special exceptions as may be. That concludes my report. Any questions?
I do, because I didn't see it and we haven't heard about it in quite some time, is the old Times Herald site. Where are we?
I did speak to the developer, but no, not a problem. I did. I nagged him quite a bit. So I'll be open about that. I've spoken to him twice this year and twice this year he told me, I still don't have my financing together. I'll get back to you. So that's where we are with it.
Okay. So where does that leave, as you said, because we saw some conditional uses expire and things like that. So where is he in that process?
Oh, he hadn't even started. What we did, what he did, he came with an idea.
Right.
Which.
And demolished the building.
Right. Which we like to demolish the building.
Right.
Put up. And we even changed the zoning to accommodate the building from ground up of apartment building. And which was actually a quirk in the ordinance, which was good.
Right.
So the good news is that if he sells this to any other developer, they can do that without going through too much problems. Now, him as a developer, does he have the financing and the capability of doing it?
Gotcha.
That's what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. And recreation.
Good evening. Wanted to just provide you all with the updates for recreation for the month of November. In November, we secured a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Department of Education. We've also received a twenty-four thousand dollar grant from the Arcadia Foundation, which will support our summer concert series. Currently, we are under renovations right now. The Recreation Department, we have decided to give the Recreation Center the uplift that it needs, the facelift that it needs, I'm sorry. So we have started with the painting. That project was, it was near and dear to me. We sat down with the youth participants that come into our center every single day to figure out what they wanted to see out of the center and different things that they had in mind for the center. So our team lounge is actually being repurposed. We completed the painting process last Thursday. That project was definitely heavy on me. Everybody in this room that I spoke to about the project, they knew I had a hard deadline of the end of the month and I almost didn't make it. But luckily, I was able to make that deadline. Again, the painting project was finished last week, so now we are getting ready to install new carpets inside of the facility and then we'll begin to purchase the furniture that we need for the game room. So some of the items that will be purchased for the game room slash team lounge, we're going to put new furniture inside. We're also going to incorporate a pool table, a foosball table, as well as a basketball shot machine, and we're going to have a few arcade machines inside of that area as well. We have also established partnerships with I-Nine Sports. I-Nine Sports is going to offer youth indoor soccer for ages three to twelve and that program is scheduled to begin on January the seventeenth. We also partner with Project Caparera, which is a Brazilian martial arts program. So they are actually going to start with us as well in January and we are also going to have Heyday Sports come out and we're going to engage in adult pickleball. So those are the different updates that we have for the recreation.
We got an adult pickleball champ right there.
Yes, so we're going to have pickleball. So just literally, just listening to members in the community and having the opportunity to sit down with various people in the community so that we can honestly hear the different things that they want to see inside of the Recreation Center and we'll actually drill them out. So we're also, one of the other projects I'm working on right now is how to incorporate therapeutic recreation. We have, we have a participant that lives across the street from us and she has Down Syndrome and a lot of her friends have Down Syndrome as well. So we want to make sure that we're literally servicing every single user group within our community. So looking at different ways to program for that particular group of participants, we have agreed currently to give them two days a week at the facility. So they want to use the gym one day and we're also going to use the classroom one day upstairs. So one of the programs that we're going to have upstairs is going to be a fashion and art program. Speaking to those members, that was one of the things that they told us that we wanted. So we're going to make sure that we incorporate that and we're going to use some of the grant funds to support that project.
Any other questions, Kelly?
I've got a comment. One. Great first report. These are, I mean, I am so excited about the amount of new things that you're bringing in and really based on the feedback of the people participating at the Recreation Center, both program and design. So I want to thank you for that. One heck of a first month report and I'm looking forward to your future ones. My question there is, I'm wondering if you can just expand a little bit more on the grant from the Department of Education and the goals of that grant.
So the grant from the Department of Education is to support educational programs as well as financial literacy programs. So we have a few different programs that we have in mind, primarily with the financial literacy. We honestly want to target the senior population to get them more acclimated with different things to look out for. A lot of our seniors, of course, I know my grand-grand, she goes to the bank every single Friday. So just making sure that they are financially educated. Try to explain to them the differences between debit cards and actually going into the bank, just to give, make sure that they have the necessary information that they need. I know that it's a hard process for some of our seniors to actually adapt to change. So we just, again, we just want to make sure that they have the necessary tools. And also with that financial literacy component, we're also going to incorporate the youth participants as well, start to teach them early. Start to teach them early about taxes, how to write a check, how to sign off on different things, how to actually file, how to file your taxes, how to read your pay stubs. So these are different things that we want to employ with that particular program. Also, with the educational grant, again, the Fashion and Arts Program. With the Fashion and Arts Program, it is literally, the way we are modeling the program, we're actually going to teach them about branding and how to create your own brand for yourself, and they'll actually be able to do it within the facility with the equipment that we're going to purchase.
There you go, Dustin.
I love it.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. Actually, a question and then a couple of comments. So with the teen lounge, because that was originally sponsored by Cam Reddish, was he incorporated into this, or can you figure out how to bring him into that just so to maybe boost the resources that you have for that? And maybe have kids, because you know, where is he, Miami now? I'm not sure where, Lakers? So maybe just because he's a Norristown resident, you know, was from Norristown, and he donated that room. So maybe just keep in the spirit of that room and where it was from. Is it still the Cam Reddish room? Or, you know what I mean, where that is, and just kind of maybe see if we can kind of keep that in there. I don't know if it's lost or where that is, but, you know, just to kind of keep that.
I actually just learned about this gentleman last week, just being brutally honest. We were having a conversation, and it was right before, because they started the painting upstairs first. So it was kind of right before they came downstairs to start the painting downstairs. And one of my teammates, he said to me, he said, you know, Bree, are you familiar with? And I said, no. I said, I always saw the sign, I always saw the picture, but I just, it just never dawned on me to ask the question. And I'll be brutally honest about that. I just thought it was one of those stickers that you just put up there. So they started explaining to me who the gentleman was. I went on Google, I read about him. He was actually like one of the top players in the state of Pennsylvania. So I would like to definitely have him involved, because I know that he dedicated that space to the teens. So I would definitely love to have him involved. If there's a way that I can reach out to him, that would be great.
Yeah, we can get him with Sonia.
Yeah, former councilwoman Sonia Sanders. Yeah, they all kind of coordinated that, so Randall can keep the spirit of Cam Reddish alive in the Rec Center. And so, yes, I do know what Councilwoman Smith said about all that, like, that is phenomenal work. Thank you, kudos to you, I love it. Thank you for including the kids and all those decision-making opportunities. And just for our seniors, if you can think about, I don't know if it's a thing, I feel like it's a thing for me, is not computer literacy so much anymore, but smartphone literacy. You know what I mean? Helping them how to navigate their smartphone, because, you know, nobody has really, unless you've got a business, you don't have a laptop, and everybody's doing things on their phone. So that might be something, in addition to the financial literacy, is smartphone literacy for the seniors, how to work their smartphones. But yes, phenomenal. I love it.
Questions, comments?
I'm excited about the pickleball.
I want to see your pickleball uniform.
Well, I think it's good for the community, because from the young to the old play pickleball. Like, I was just happened to be at Phoenixville Y M C A, and everybody playing pickleball is like over sixty-five that were walking in there and matches. So that's good for a senior community. And I'm all about all ages intertwining, becoming that community that I grew up in in Norristown. So I believe, or not, I believe pickleball could bring that in back. And that's where we're going to. And also, just, I'm very curious about what we're going to be buying. Also, I'll be talking to you a lot.
And one thing she did mention, that, you know, we've handed off the whole master plan for the Rec Center. That grant is on the way. Brianna is the point of contact now to make that happen. So we've got, you know, we've gotten the stuff we needed together for the state in terms of starting that. So that master plan process is getting ready to start, and you guys in the community, you know, you decide you want pickleball courts as part of whatever.
Yes, you do. That'll be part of that, part of that discussion about Harding Boulevard.
Questions, comments?
I have a question. How does the community involve?
It's not a public comment forum at this point, but we will get with you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
With that, just wanted to make one comment before I make a motion to adjourn. And it's because I've been accused of something at this meeting in a public comment. And yes, you would have to file a campaign finance report if you spent two hundred and fifty dollars or more, or raised two hundred and fifty dollars or more. I haven't raised a dollar, haven't spent a dollar, because I had a message. And my message was with the people of Norristown, for the people of Norristown. Unfortunately, it wasn't for the people of Bridgeport. With that, motion to adjourn.
We need a form for that under two fifty.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.